Okay. Call the November tenth, two thousand twenty Barnes County Department Board Meeting to order. First, I'd like to recognize our visitors that are out here and I'd like to welcome Eric through the board.
Did he have his speech?
Yep.
He got you.
I think so.
This is initiation.
So then I'll turn over Mr. Feversen for some thank yous.
Okay, congratulations to our Hurd Award winners this month, Grace Mueller, Max Fair, Hunter Anderson. And then our Grid Award winners, Braden Bundy, Matasey Carpenter, McKinley Fladland, Michaela Har, Damian Olson, and Justin Slinker. And then a congratulations to Asher McFagin as she was named to the All District Five Volleyball Team.
Mr. Feversen, may I, as a member of the veteran community and working in the guard, I want to thank B C N students and staff for putting together the Veterans Day program that was sent out on YouTube today.
Perfect.
It was, it was a very, very nice, nice video, so thank you for, to the B C N staff and students.
Agenda, you got anything to add, Mr. Feversen?
Nope, I just, under, just so you know, under superintendent report, I'll, I'll, I'll give you an update on, on strategic plan and we can talk a little bit about where we want to go from, for, I talked with Mr. Schott, I've been talking with Dr. Schott the last few days and we've, he's got some recommendations, so I'm gonna see where we want to go with it.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to consent agenda if there's any questions on minutes, bills, or financial reports. I have a couple of questions, I'll see if anybody else has them before then. Oh, jump in. Food service, what, it says yearbooks for kitchen. What is the, did we buy, I mean, does the kitchen buy yearbooks or what?
Yes, they, they get one, they've been doing it for years, they'll get a yearbook so that they can kind of identify kids by pictures. So when they come through the food line, they can start learning their names a little bit better. So they've been doing that for a while.
Then the other one I had was activity, I don't know, maybe extracurricular, we talked about that, but usually we have a, when we take activity routes that's run through payroll, but we did this as a reimbursable, can you just explain what, for cross-country?
Oh, because what happened was-
They did run through payroll or what?
No, we hired, we hired Jasmine as our coach and then there were some meets she couldn't take them to. So instead of, she, she took a lot less of the salary and then we, we reimbursed our, somebody that drove as a driver for the cross-country meets. So we spent probably less by that route than we would have had she driven or we hired somebody to drive the, drive the kids on, on the basis of, you know, times, because you get so much per drive mile and so much for sit time.
So how does that work, just the question, for like liability for driving and do we do background checks on them if they're not in a-
Yeah, we had, no, she just, it was, she basically was hauling her own kid for most of the meets. So, yeah, the one, I think she had one time where she hauled more than just her own.
Okay.
But that's a good point, I mean, that's something that we all have to check out and make sure that we're not, if we do that in the future, that if we're hauling more than just your own person. And we just have to make, we have to make sure we've got that covered then, yeah, that would have been, but that's, that's what we did because-
Different than how we handle it.
Yes, because Jasmine, Jasmine, what happened was she got hired as the coach and then she ended up getting a job, a full-time job. She was, it was only going to be a part-time and then she got a full-time job, so she still did all the practices, but there was a few meets she couldn't attend. So when she could attend, she drove and, and did that.
So then you just, you, how did you justify that salary on, for her, for coaching it?
What I did, we, we had talked about, yeah, she did all, she did all, well, she did some of the meets, you know, because we only had, what, five or six meets, something like that, due to the COVID, so we, so she did all the practices and then she drove when, gave when she could. We lowered the salary and reimbursed the driver for that part, portion of the salary.
Okay. Just a question, you gotta say it was just handled differently, it has been-
Yes, it has, yeah, and going forward, we'll see, I don't know if she'll continue to coach us because she got that job. So next year, it'll be a whole different thing more than, when, and sitting down, we will know that upfront, whether, if she does coach, if she's not going to take them, that we'd have to work out the, getting the kids, the transportation, whatever, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Bill, bills, minutes, or financial reports?
Mike, didn't we do something if they're hauling our students and it's not a school vehicle and stuff?
That's, that's what I said, I didn't know if you guys had talked about that.
Didn't we, didn't we have, do something about that, Mike?
We had talked about it, but I don't know if we've ever got a full policy on it. Because we, we had talked about if there's, what, four or five kids that you, that we would haul, I mean, if it was going to an activity. And, yeah, I, but we, I don't know if we ever put anything directly in policy, I can talk to the school board, see if they've got anything with that.
Hold outside. Okay. Any other questions, consent agenda? If not, we would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda. Outside.
Roll call, Lincoln?
Mike?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Chad?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yeah, it's true, committee reports, president's report, I have nothing. Current tech, really nothing right now, we meet on Thursday, so I don't have anything new to report since last month. I want to see if anybody has any questions, or? Not, techno, did Mrs. Bits leave anything with anybody for technology report? Nope?
Giving power.
No, it's all-
Well, it could be like-
Is the camera going?
What?
Camera in the gym going?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, it's ready. It's ready.
They used it for the last district game for volleyball.
He did?
Yeah.
It was on, the, the cameras in the gym are on today too for the, for the fifth and sixth. She's got everything scheduled, then if you go into our website, you can see that, or the NF, I think it's NFHS website, it'll tell you if you can click on it and, and pick it up.
And then we got a buy a subscription to that?
You buy, I believe you buy a subscription, it's like seventy dollars a year, or nine ninety-nine, or ten ninety-nine a month, depending what you want to do.
Mrs. Bussie, pre-k, six principal report.
Um, we just scheduled some training for the teachers on proficiency skills that will take place December first. Um, in reading course, we dismissed two students for showing growth and Mrs. Brady might talk about that too, but their growth was outstanding in the first quarter. And so we're bringing two students who are on watch to replace those kids. For peer leaders, they're meeting with Mrs. Kay the next couple of weeks to work on personality leader traits. So they can see what traits the other members are and how they can learn to work together. I was given update on the points and the buys and pride cards so, so far, and I haven't counted any points from November. We've given out three thousand one hundred and fifty-three points to the B C Ners and have written eighty-two buys and pride cards that have been mailed home to students and parents for, and some staff. And then today, the grant slash M P S S team met with Sterling Middle School and they were able to describe each of their roles throughout the grant process and what it looked like. So we are meeting next Wednesday, that's our first meeting as a team to start laying out the framework of, of building expectations and deciding on a clinician to partner with, which I know, Mike, you and I have talked a little bit about, so any ideas would be great too. They mentioned Sanford has been a really great partner to work with on the Bismarck area and I know we have, we have a Sanford in Jamestown. We have one in Valley too, so that might be an option too. Um, that's what I want.
Any questions?
Okay.
No?
We can quit.
The Wilsons, done as well.
Uh, we have a lot, parent-teacher conferences took place on the fifth, virtually. We had seventy-one time slots that were taken, so the average of about nine per teacher. Um, as was alluded to earlier, the Veterans Day video has been posted, so I just want to thank Mr. Sandelson and student council for getting that organized and put together, to Allison Brink for producing the video collage, putting that together, and to Ms. Bits for assisting on the technical aspects and posting all of that stuff. I think it came together really well, just our way of being able to continue the B C N tradition of recognizing the Veterans Day, because it's a pretty big special day here at this school, so keep that going. Today, we had to quarantine our eighth graders as a result of positive tests. Twenty-three students were impacted and then we also have eight other students that are out in quarantine, bringing our total to thirty-one. That's all I have.
The other group is off.
Uh, from last time, that group was back, uh, quarantined?
This was their last day.
This was their last day.
So they'll be back on Thursday.
Mistress, how long are they out for, the eighth grade?
Uh, the eighth graders will be, they'll be back in school Wednesday the eighteenth.
Thursday the eighteenth, isn't it?
Yep, Thursday the eighteenth.
Thursday the eighteenth.
Yep.
No, Wednesday's the eighteenth.
Thursday's the nineteenth.
Should be Thursday, yeah, Wednesday, that's right, Wednesday the nineteenth, because their last day is Tuesday. So it would be Wednesday the eighteenth.
So they only have quarantine three days?
Well, what you got the weekend?
Their last day of contact with the positive case was Tuesday the third.
Oh.
So their time started on the fourth.
Okay.
So their fourteen days takes us through the seventh.
And it's fourteen days for everybody.
Calendar is.
Right, calendar day, for everybody. Like, like if-
Ten if you have it, fourteen if you don't.
Right, but what I'm saying is, like, if I get it, my kids would have to quarantine for fourteen.
They would quarantine for your ten, plus another fourteen. And then if somebody got it after you and your family, they would have to quarantine for another ten and another fourteen, so it depends, really.
So don't get it.
Okay, so-
It's gonna take it to the next year.
Okay.
Yeah, just don't get tested if you get sick.
Yeah, because I was on a principal meeting and she's a first-year principal and she's on her thirty-second day of it.
Okay.
So it's, it can get, it can get there.
Yeah.
Do you have a specific question, feel free to reach out, I see it going.
Yeah, my, my wheel, okay. Yeah, I don't know.
It also depends, like, we did send out an email saying if somebody in your household is sick, to keep your kids home, because that's why we're having to quarantine.
Right.
So if the kid is in school, parents call us and say, you know, I've been feeling sick, I, and I went and tested today. And then we're late by usually one day, we weren't getting them out of the school before that forty-eight hours, so, um, and since clarifying it, it's helped a lot on the elementary side.
So technically, if you have a household member-
Yes.
So like, if anyone in here has a household member that has it, they shouldn't be back in our school for twenty-four days.
That's a recommendation, yes.
It's, it depends, because if the kids don't, if the kids test positive, they can be back sooner, if they don't test positive-
No, but I'm talking about the person, like, if any, one of us had a, oh, had a family member.
Technically, yes.
Technically. Well, and it also depends too, because you can be on two different floors. Like, if you have different floors in your house and each floor has a bathroom, like, if you're not sharing the bathroom, not sharing a bedroom, not eating together, and you're sitting on second level.
It's extremely gray.
Because that's-
It's extremely gray, okay.
Why, it's me, yesterday is my first day back from that, my daughter tested positive, so when I saw you at home, that was my first day.
Yep.
So this got me back there, but there's discrepancy on what person you're talking to.
Right.
Because at first I was told it didn't matter if we separated in the house, we were in the same house. They're not gonna recommend it, but then talking to Teresa or whatnot-
Right.
That our downstairs was sectioned off as a separate apartment and so then they're like, yeah, so then mine ended today and my wife had one more day longer than I did, so hers, she gets to go back Thursday.
I'm just curious, I, how it-
Like, we follow Teresa well, because we have regular conversations as frequently with her and, but if you talk to another city county health, you might hear something totally different.
That's why I'm-
Which is extremely weird, because-
That's why I'm just putting it out there, that it is very gray.
Extremely gray, yeah, because that, that was, that was the first thing when Mr. Wilson let me know that, that he, they had, that they had quarantined him and he's got to go ten, ten with, with his daughter and fourteen beyond, but I knew that the situation, they have a, a downstairs. And I called and Teresa said, well, what we've been told was that that, that counts. So she was gonna bring it up at a, at a state meeting to talk about how can you separate as a household?
Right.
Because at one time you're told, doesn't matter if you're, like, he was told, if you're in the same house, it, it, then, then you're considered, you'd have to be quarantined for that twenty-four day period. So again, yep, gray.
Gray.
And it does make a difference, because had that been the case, I wouldn't have been able to come back till sixteen.
Thank you.
Eric?
How, how does taking a test and having a negative test affect all that?
It doesn't.
Nothing.
Absolutely nothing, you can't come back sooner.
So if you wait, like, your family members fourteen days, you still have to give a ten even if you take and have a negative test after their fourteen days?
No, you wouldn't have to do another ten if you weren't positive. Yeah, so you only have to do the fourteen days if nobody is.
Yeah, so if, say, somebody in your household had it, you had, and they were gonna quarantine for ten, you'd go that ten. If you tested and tested negative, that doesn't get you out of quarantine, you still have to go that ten plus the fourteen. Which, again, makes really, because they said the, the rationale behind it was you can test up to fourteen days after your last exposure with a positive, you can test positive.
So they told me not to take a test for four weeks, mine was up last Friday.
Yep.
CDC told me, go and take a test for four weeks, because you could test positive for four weeks.
They told us ninety days.
Oh.
Yeah, they told us three-
Your doctors don't take no more tests.
This is what we have to deal with.
Yeah, three, they told us three months.
This is why I was asking, because I've heard so many of this, I don't know how it keeps it straight, and that's why it's not being controlled.
And then that's the whole thing, I mean, you, and, and it all depends on when, who's, how, when you get your test results back. So, girl, they test on Thursday, we don't hear back till Tuesday.
Right.
We, they've already been in school for nine days.
Yep.
Yep, extremely gray.
Any other questions, Mr. Wilson? Okay, no, thanks. Mr. Feversen, superintendent.
Yeah, strategic plan, I, like I said, I've been busy with Dr. Schott's, what his, what his question, you know, because we, what hap, we, if we remember way back in March, on March thirteenth, I remember Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Bussie and I visiting with him on the phone. At three o'clock, we got the call to shut down all of our high school activities and then on Sunday was when we went into quar, went into the lockdown or whatever you want to call it. So this has been sitting out there, so what we need to do is, do we want, how do we want to approach this? I know, I visited with Mike, he had some things that he wanted, that he had, um, that he had brought to our attention that, you know, to look at, but do we want to bring the whole group back together and not restart the process, but re-familiarize ourselves with the process? Um, what, what are your thoughts?
I think it would be good, I feel like so much has happened since, that I'm trying to still remember what our new school gave me, local, I don't even-
Yeah, exactly.
I remember, I remember what it is.
And he, like you said, he put the roadmap together, you know, so we've got the, the strategic plan roadmap, but, you know, we haven't, we haven't done anything with approval, we haven't assigned anything, we haven't put timelines in, you know, so, and now Eric coming on the board, he was involved, so we thought we can, we can invite Lori back too if she wants to become that community member. Then we can just switch the two roles, if Lori wants to, I mean, it's up to her, if she would choose to. So are we looking at-
We have been working towards the initiatives though.
What's that?
We have been working towards-
Yes, yeah, we, I mean, it's just that the plan actually hasn't been approved. The things that we talked about, the principals and I've been, and been working with and trying to, you know, trying to get, moving toward those, but we've never had a formal approval to prove the plan.
Is that what we're looking for, or we're looking at the other things that we're gonna bring in?
No.
Like that communication plan?
Yeah, we, we need to look at all of it, I mean, and that's what we gotta talk about, we wanna, because if, if we, we, we couldn't approve the plan now because we, we really, I think it would be, you know, nobody really can remember everything that's in there. So we would need to at least discuss and meet individually or however, unless we want to bring the whole team back together, you know, and review the whole thing, find out if there's things we want to change and move from that perspective or how we want to do it. So committee members, then Mike, Michelle, Eric. Does that, thoughts?
I think we gotta get the group back.
Okay.
That's just my thought.
I would recommend that you bring the entire group back, review everything that is in that plan right now and then have a discussion on why we did those. And then if there's time in that meeting, start looking at some of the questions and comments on certain things that, uh, people have about it and then start discussing that. Because I don't think anybody can start talking about what was all in that plan, so we have to have a clear understanding. Have a clear understanding of what it is and remember what our goal was while we were doing that before it got cut short, before we didn't move forward on it.
I concur. So are we thinking we're gonna try to do it in person, or are we gonna try to do Zoom, or what are we?
I think whatever you guys prefer and would like to do. It's, I, I'll tell you this, we did it during the school day before, the school days are insane. I mean, we're getting calls, trying to track slightly, so.
And as I mentioned, Mike, Dr. Schott's won't be involved, I mean, he'll be as a consultant, but he won't be at these meetings, so that, that might take out the ten o'clock in the morning meeting if we have to. Because he did, his, his thing was he didn't want to drive in the winter time at night, so that's why we went in the mornings. So if we want to res, if we want to schedule for a Zoom meeting at seven o'clock on a Sunday, or if we want to try to get people together, however you guys want to do it, it's up to you guys.
I'm open to either.
I think it's hard to get some of that stuff accomplished on a Zoom meeting though, I mean, when you're really trying to get people to work together on a line and engage, it's pretty hard.
You might have problems getting people to come off too, because of the whole COVID thing.
Who else, we had, just, was Jen the only other community member?
Yes.
Yes, other than Eric at the time.
Okay, and then rest for staff and, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Just your way to say.
So it'd be Jen and Lori, then would be the two that would be outside of the system at this point.
Are we picking a date?
No.
So do we want to, I mean, do we want, should we send out, like a, you can put a Zoom or a calendar, not a Zoom, but a, um, one of those calendars, Doodle calendars and find a date that works for everybody?
I'm an emailer, I'll just give that together.
All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Feversen?
Nope.
About A D report?
Hey, Monday night, I, um, Tori is gonna do the volleyball award night, um, with, with everything that's going on, she's just gonna feed the girls after practice and then just have a quick award ceremony and, you know, just the parents involved. Uh, seven o'clock Monday night in the, in the commons. And then, um, you know, we've just been moving stuff around due to some of the, you know, quarantine issues. We're accommodating COVID basically is what we're doing with our scheduling, so, um, we just gotta keep fluid, they keep telling us, stay fluid.
Any questions, Mr. Feversen, A D? Okay, thank you. Texter Kirk, you got something to report?
This is gonna tie into the archery, we can just, why don't we just do this? I'll, I'll give you what we, what we talked about and then we'll bring archery in to go ahead and give their proposal, whatever, however they want to approach this.
You want to do it now or on the agenda?
I would say we do it now.
Okay.
And just move them up. And then that way, if they choose, I mean, they don't have to sit and listen to all the other stuff if they don't, if they choose not to. Um, the first thing we talked about, you know, was, was, we, we went into the archery thing, but we, we need to get together facility use agreement and, and, uh, Merrill, Meredith Booklick is gonna put that together. Um, what that would do would be, you know, all of our, our policy to, to agree on what any outside organization was gonna use. What she sent, what I got from the School Boards Association, I got non-curricular use of district property that we recommended goes to the policy committee for approval. Once I have that facility use agreement, that'll be part of what the policy committee would have to deal with. And then they also sent out a, a waiver of liability, um, holding harmless, and that would be basically COVID, um, agreement. It would, it would address the, the COVID situation where the, the facility use and the non-curricular use would address, quote, "normal circumstances." So once I get all that together, I will reconvene the policy committee to go over those, to put that in. Um, we talked about archery and the art, the, I think you guys are here to do, to give a proposal. Um, the proposal, um, that we talked about, be, we, we were, we were, we were okay with having archery do a tournament here. The problem is, I don't know how it's gonna get accomplished with, now that we're, we're, we're in orange. And we have to, we have to limit things, so I guess at that point, I can turn it over to you guys if you want to go ahead and give, give your proposal or how you want to approach this one.
For practice or for-
Practices, yeah, practices we were okay with, we said as long as they get us together, they've got a plan to get the kids in and out, we're okay with that, because that's our kids that are gonna be practicing. And got, the, the committee's concern was the bringing in of, of a-
The board's part was the outside, or the, the big one being in archery.
Yep. So, I think, our, I guess, board, if you, if you guys are okay, that that was the one thing we talked about, was the committee was okay with practices.
Yeah.
And so that would be-
Maybe handle being a house, or, that's what we talked about last one too.
Kate?
Okay, our thought is if we do do a tournament, we'd only have forty kids shooting at a time. You put twenty on the line so they got their six-foot distance and then when they get done shooting, they step back and the other ones shoot and then they gotta go up and do their scoring or whatever, but then we'd only have forty kids shooting, three line judges, and then Jody out front at the desk, you're gonna only have, you could have six coaches come in and that's it, you do, you're fifty people.
Yep. Because it would have to be limited to fifty.
Right, that's, that would be as much as we could do, no parents could come in and just be kids and and they all have to shoot their own arrows, they have to bring their own arrows, we can't let them shoot ours, they have to do their own stuff, so.
I did send out a message to Jeff Long, which is the game and fish, he oversees all the NASP.
Yep.
Um, and he said that they are having more meetings and stuff too, because I, usually by now, there's twenty-some save the dates and with our save the date, there was ten.
Okay.
So I said, are people having problems, um, getting it to fly through having it in their school? Or, and he said that some of them have canceled the season, some of them are waiting till January. So if we do do something, I think we would have to move our date, I think, if we did do something. Because I think a lot of our, um, schools are not gonna start until January.
Okay.
Um, and a lot can change by then too.
Definitely.
Um, I guess our thought right now was to move, we were gonna start in December for practice, but I think since everybody's gonna kind of wait till January, we're gonna move it to wait till, um, we get done with it in F I E D.
Okay.
So that when we start practice, we can hand out, those who don't have bows, we can hand out and they can take them home so that there's no sharing and everything.
Okay.
And then we'll kind of reassess as to if a tournament can go, and I'll know more from Jeff Long at that point too, when it comes to how these tournaments should be run. I have been looking at like how Kentucky, like the big places who run them and they're running them right now. They are limiting, um, the amount of shooters. They are having one student at a line or one archer at a line at a time. Um, when they score, they're either scoring with a coach or somebody is just watching them or they're having one score and then step back. Um, so there's different ways of doing it that they are doing it. Um, some are doing virtual, which I have to figure out what really that means too. If shooting at our own school and you upload your scores into a, to their tournament, um, that might be something that more of the schools are gonna go towards too.
Yeah.
But I'd like to hear more from Jeff when they have their overall meeting.
Okay.
Our other thought was to just have a tournament within our own kids.
Own kids, yeah.
Um, and just kind of make a big deal out of it too, so we, we can do something in a, in a way.
And I think the, the committee anyway, we have, it hasn't been brought to the board for final approval, but the committee, I believe, was okay with the practices and, and if we could get to a different color zone, I think they're, they'd be a lot more open to it. the committee, I believe, was okay with the practices, and and if we could get to a different color zone, I think they're, they'd be a lot more open to it. But this, you know, now that we're stuck in orange, I mean, it it really limits our, the things we can do.
Right.
And I think with the tournament date that we have saved, when I talked to you, when we saved the date, I don't know how many archers I would actually get right now.
We'd be better off waiting till February.
Right, so, and then we can reassess and reapply something later on.
Okay, so.
I think I probably, I'm thinking that the same way, to relook at it a little bit later, and it might be totally different. If you're okay with labeling it to come back or something.
Do you want approval for the practices?
For practices, for sure, because I wanna start those the second week in January.
And our recommendations is to do that, we could just do a motion for that.
Because we're gonna keep it twenty shooters or less, just depending on, we're gonna stagger, um, practice times, and they can only come into the gym when their practice time is ready.
You only use a small gym though for practice, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have to check capacity.
You have a lot of people that need that gym though.
Okay.
Can you use the big gym if you have to?
We can if you guys allow it.
Yeah, that was.
If if there's normally, you know, you always have basketball on top of your room there, so then we have all the targets that are in the way and stuff, so.
Equipment being in the way and stuff.
But twenty people in there should be, shouldn't they?
Yeah, I, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, I don't know what the capacity of that gym is, we'd have to.
Auxiliary gym is three sixty.
Three sixty, so then we're fine. Cause it'd be, what's twenty, well, what figure, Mr. Wilson, eighty, isn't that twenty-five percent of three sixty and eighty? Where's our math power? Did I get it right? Was it eighty? Is it eighty? Ninety? Ninety? Okay, so ninety, so thirty-five percent is ninety, so then fifty would work.
Frank, hundreds and a quarter, four hundred and forty-four.
I just said yes, cause I knew none of you guys would.
So the little gym should be fine for practice.
Yes, yeah, if if the capacity's three sixty, that would allow twenty-five percent of it would be ninety, and then we can only have fifty in there anyway, so the twenty-five percent is above fifty.
Four at any length.
The unit's not set up for it. So Dan's had all their cleaning and all that stuff, and they're all set with everything you guys have talked about for cleaning and distancing everything within their plan? You had Dan's had talked for water bottles, is it? Is it similar to Dan's, if you have their plan for water bottles and all the stuff that you guys asked for, for Dan's?
They really only shoot for a half an hour.
Right, I'm just asking if it's the thing that you looked at for.
As long as I'm not, like, we're gonna give them arrows that they keep in a case, and if they have, most of them have their own bows, but if they don't, then they get a, I have twenty-two school bows that we can give out. And usually they just come and they grab it off the hanger and they shoot, and they hang it back up and they leave. But they can take that home, we'll just make sure we know who's got what. And then they have their own arrows, so really, as long as coaches are setting up the targets, they're not touching anything except getting their stuff out, putting their, and then shooting, so they take their stuff and they go.
So we would need a motion to approve?
And they would wear masks until they get up to the shoot line, because a lot of them pull back here, we can't have masks on.
Could be arrows stuck in the.
Yeah, I really don't want arrows flying everywhere.
Okay, so we would need a motion to approve the recommendation from the, your committee to allow archery practice?
Um, I'll start it.
Lindsay?
Mike?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yeah.
Brett?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trent?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And then please come back when we're, got a better idea where we go with the, with the tournament part.
Sounds good.
And like I said, our, the the committees, I mean, they were, they were fine with you guys having the tournament. That's not a, the issue, we just want you to know that, because of the limitation, we hate to, we hate to push it and and then have something happen, so.
And with hearing that a lot of people are gonna move it, I'd like to wait and see, and everybody kinda be on the same page same time, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
Are there any other groups, guys? Any other groups that are coming in that look, that needs approval? I mean, you got, we talked about, you know, you got the dance has been done, the archery's been done.
Yep.
What about, we talked about last time, did we have to anything for the open gyms and cleaning balls and?
Yeah, we haven't done anything with that, I mean, that would be, I mean, that'd be part of our school, I mean, if we wanna, we wanna take a look at that, we could, we could put a policy together, if you want the policy committee to look through it.
That was another group that we said we'd have to see what their plan was.
Okay. You're talking, what you're talking, opening up for outside people? So I don't, nobody has requested anything, so I don't know, I mean, I would have to talk to the coaches.
Then other years, some of the other have come in and played on the Sunday nights and stuff, so I don't know if that's, they've had some of that.
Let's see, I
Well, no one that travels.
Emailed you about it, but, um, since they were starting their
Yeah.
season, I, I thought I'd wait till next year if.
Once they, if 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 like, because Jody's been the one that really has come in with the travel ball teams, if she were to wanna bring them in for practices, then she would, she would have to put proposal together.
Do the same type of proposal, okay.
Yeah, and that's how we've, we've put it out there, so I haven't had anybody else.
No, that's only question that, cause that, that's what I'm saying, was any other ones discussed in your, in your meeting or not?
No, because we haven't had, I haven't had any requests. Like, the open gym, I I'm, I guess I would have to check and see if Schaefer or Tori anybody.
All we talked about, one, I know, maybe it's just been discussion, was the cleaning of balls, how to do that, and that type of thing, is that getting done before the school comes in the next day?
Yeah, but that would be, you know, see, because it's only been limited to our our coaches, I mean, that would have to be something we'd have to talk to them about.
Follow the same plan that's put in place with school.
Yeah.
So like this Sunday, if we're gonna have open gym, we would clean, have the girls wipe down the balls as they put them away.
Yeah.
So, and then document who was here for these purposes, and yeah, come and sign up on.
And to my knowledge, there hasn't been anybody that's been in to have an open gym, you know, outside of the, of our coaches. So that might be something I need to make sure that the coaches do know, that if they get anybody asking to come in.
Alumni, people that have done it in the past, that's where the question is.
Cause it was so Sunday nights, there was a lot of them.
Yes.
So just now, so it's not too far from there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Last year, that's been the traditional thing on, on Sunday nights, people coming on.
Yeah, so I'll make sure I mention that to Schaefer, cause I know he he used to come in too with him. So maybe I'll just mention that, that if anybody's thinking about coming in, they need to put a proposal together before they can come in and start just open up and play, so.
Yeah.
Anything else for Archer?
Thanks for the money.
Yeah, we wanted to just thank you for the, the thousand dollars that we used towards bettering our program, and we appreciate that.
Yeah. You guys do a good job, so, thanks.
Thank you. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We just put weapons in their hands, that's all.
Defensive. Okay, old business update on smart restart plan.
I guess we're just, on there just to revisit things, um, now that he's moved to orange, um, we've, we've taken out our colors. Um, anyhow, did you bring the, the plan to, what what areas you had to talk about?
I emailed it.
Okay, so those are, those were the questions that came up.
I didn't read it.
What she mailed was that?
No, this, I was, I sent after our last board meeting.
Oh, maybe I did read it then.
Really stuck with you, Robert.
It's a basically, we took out the color system, so we don't have colors. Um, the recommendation was that no matter which color that we put in, that was recommended by the N E C L, put in every color that, it's the board's decision on what they wanna do. So green, blue, yellow, or whatever, whatever color that the county is in, the board has the, has the board right to do whatever they choose. So even if we're into green and you guys chose to go to remote, we could do that. That's our recommendation, is that we put in there, into each of the of the categories that it's, it's, you know, we could go to anywhere. So it's not that if you're green, you have to be person to person, you know, cause we, that's where.
And Rob's right, I did just send another part of the plan is the mask mandates, right? Because we've had the quarantine a couple classes now during quarter two. So I reached out to parents and staff, and I sent that to you guys today, with hopefully enough time, but I wanted to give parents and teachers time to respond to. And I know that a few of the parents have stated that if we do change it, that we need to open it up to allow them to make a different decision on what they're doing with their children.
And I counted them up.
Do we need to do that either way, or just one way? You say open it back up?
Well, I mean.
I mean, you're saying just if we met, I mean, do we need to open that up either way?
It depends on what you mean, like, do, do we allow parents to pull their kids now that numbers are going up?
If you're saying if we, given the choice, if we have the mask, that they should be reevaluated, do we allow them the other way?
I mean, that's completely up to you guys, I just, you know, we have no kids in ASU right now, and I'm not sure it'd be something you would wanna go back to. They talked us into a, I mean, they sold it a lot better than it was. And so it, transitioning kids out and in, that might look a little bit different, but if any parent has the option to homeschool at any time during the year, and I would not want that with their kids.
Did, now, with the, with the ASU, that is a, is that a semester or a quarter? Will we go to quarter there?
It's quarter for elementary.
Okay, so then, right now, so if 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 they chose to take them out, they would have to homeschool?
Or, or send them.
Or, yeah, they could, yeah.
Um, cause once again, we're back at, our teachers are doing so much with COVID already. How much do we put on them to check in with the kids at home? Even checking in with quarantine kids is overwhelming and getting things home and prep. So that is something that I would not wanna put on my teachers, does the parent have that option? Absolutely, they always have had that option even before COVID, but obviously you want all the kids.
I agree with that, I'm just saying if we're asking to open it, if we look at it one way, you should ask.
It's completely up to the board, absolutely, if you guys wanna open it, you can open it. I just get told what to do, and I submit also.
But opening it up, are you talking, open it up to allowing them to go into remote learning?
From Mrs. Bussie was if we went to a mask mandate, not say we're doing, if we went to a mask mandate, those parents would have a choice to change.
Well, they always have a choice to homeschool.
My question would be if we're going to orange, if that's the case, we should give all parents a chance to change.
Well, they would, they wouldn't have the option of going into remote learning until the end of the second quarter.
Yep.
So they could do that at that point, regardless of what man, what we decide. It would be the homeschool, I mean, if if we said you, you have to wear masks, and somebody said, well, I'm not gonna do it, they have the option of going into, to homeschooling.
Or we're not enforcing masks a hundred percent, and some parents are nervous about that, they have that on.
Yeah, they could always have the option of homeschooling.
That's what I'm saying, that should be often both ways.
Either, yeah, there is, either way for homeschooling, yeah. It would, but, uh, it would be quarterly for them going into the remote learning with, through, yes.
Which, you know, based on parent feedback, is not something I would encourage parents to do honestly, but we don't have very many options with the elementary side of things. If there's a high school student, it's a totally different story.
Eric, go ahead.
And that was twenty-five percent for it and seventy-five against it, mask mandate.
That was parents, yes, teachers were closer.
Teachers were closer, yes.
Yeah, it was a lot closer.
Sixteen, yes.
Sixteen, twenty or something, I didn't get ten.
It's the same, you know, with this one, the other one.
Eric, question or comment?
They can go, the students can go to homeschooling, does that mean they can stay at home and go through this curriculum?
No.
No.
They will have nothing to do with B C M.
So that that's just.
They buy their own curriculum, and they check in through state requirements.
So what happens, what happens right now when someone has to quarantine at home?
We
Personally on their own, like.
The teachers are sending things home and pushing things out. High school, they're Zooming with them, I told my staff that they're not Zooming. They're pushing up the lessons over C S A or Schooling G, because they're still teaching all day, every day with these kids here. If they go home for two weeks as a class, then we set it up as if we're remote learning. So they're connecting over Zoom to teach their lessons, Taya's connecting, Pansley is connecting. But if it's just a kid here and there, um, we're just sending work home with them as if they were sick, which isn't ideal either.
But, I I have to say this, I I checked in with friends that teach in Minnesota, and they are full masks every day, all day long. And it is a nightmare.
Yes.
They are just, all of them are just treading water enough to to keep their head up, because it's so chaotic. They'll have one go on to quarantine, one's coming off quarantine, then they have to check all the work that was done, and they have to do Zoom lessons, record lessons, and put them on, the same lessons that they're, I mean, it is a nightmare. Complete nightmare, and I I talked to quite a few of them, because I was like, maybe I'm just going to the ones that are gonna think the way I think. So I really tried to talk to a lot of different friends of mine that are teachers, even the ones that I don't always agree with, and they're all saying the same message.
And you'll send that message on a lot of boards and forums, and?
So I guess I, when we look at this, and I I see the teachers are split, like, it looks like half and half wanna do it. And I think what we have to do is we have to look at that teacher then, that really feels the need, that they need the mask, and help them, um, and I just, we have to do something to keep our kids in school without a mask on all day, is my opinion. Just seeing some friend's kids that come here to B C M and they wear a mask, and by the end of the week, they've got sores around their mouth, by Sunday, they're better, and then by the end of the week again, and that's, well, and and so, we need to do what's best for kids first, cause students are our priority, but we also have to take care of our staff. So if someone is super uncomfortable, one of our staff members, I mean, we have to alleviate that stress on them.
We do that, we do that.
And I, I bet you do, so.
And I know that, I mean, the teachers take on the guilt, no matter what, like.
They don't need to.
I can say, this case came from outside of our school system, like, and a lot of them were, that's why I, I told Mike, and I told you, and I told Mr. Seersen, you know, when you guys immediately went into quarantine class, like, should we go to mass? I'm like, I don't think that's it, I think it, I think there was a disconnect of what we were asking of our families. Our families were following our protocols, the students that we're getting didn't have two or more symptoms, or fever or this, or last one case itself. They sent them, they were following protocols, but somebody in the household was showing no symptoms. So that's where I sent out the email, and I said, anyone in your household is showing these symptoms, this is where we have to look at it. So that's where I think we're going to see a big difference in the shift of having to quarantine a whole class versus a child of a parent who tests positive.
And you also talked about how you could structure the rooms a little bit better, or how you're gonna deliver that classroom.
Right, right, so, I mean, we, our, our first through sixth grade have assigned seats, they they use the phrase stand-up mask app, high school does that too. Um, so we, we absolutely could, but here's where the teachers are feeling guilt. Well, whatever recess, they were around a kid who wasn't six feet away from them. What if, you know, they ended up in the bathroom and they start questioning themselves, and then if somebody does get sick or goes farther, it's on them. You know, they they feel like it's on them, even though absolutely would not be. So even with the strict assigned seating, are we going to have gym in our classrooms, eat in our classrooms, mask up at recess, or don't go to recess? You know what I mean, like, there's so many opportunities in the day to be a close contact with somebody. And then depending on the size of the group, like, when I talk to my teachers about feedback, they feel like they would rather be on the same page as a class by switching during their quarantine period as a group, than having some out as close contacts and then keeping the other ones there. Cause it is a huge difference, I mean, Mr. Wilson told the data with online learning versus not. Those group of kids that are quarantining, they won't get what the other kids are getting. So.
And honestly, okay, so the first grade's coming off of quarantine, and it was not many days. We got really lucky with tomorrow and then last Friday, so we got lucky. It has not been that bad, and I think it actually, the kids, that little break of focusing on the specialist and the math and reading, allowed them a little downtime from the mask and all of that, and they're ready to come back. And so I'm, I'm not saying I want all of our classes to have to quarantine, because obviously I don't. But it was not that bad, and I think it gives everybody a little new perspective on just how much you guys are doing here.
I'll let you make all the phone calls next time.
I would, I would do that.
My cell phone's probably not even answering.
We have money that can go to hiring people to do stuff like that. I mean, that is options, and so when you're talking about teachers being stressed or not being able to do the Zoom lesson and keep track of the kid, and you're just sending work home, well, maybe that's an area we need to funnel in with, uh, extra help. Maybe we need to do that, we have. Maybe we need to do that. We have, I added it up and it's in my notebook.
You have to realize some of that won't, won't, won't go past the thirtieth of December.
I realize, I, I know that, but in the, from now to there, we can.
Yes. Oh, yeah, we could, and that's.
We have ninety-two thousand in the one fund that has to.
Plus eighty-five.
Plus the eighty-five.
And I did, and I did hire Becky for that same reason and she's working tutor on one student. And we are able to have her check in, but we're still getting her set up with proper devices to next over Zoom and. So I, my thought was there, but that's when we had a few kids here and there.
Right.
And now we're at the end of the day, it's in very much time, so.
Well, anyway, I just, we need to do whatever we can to keep our kids in school.
So.
But being reasonable about our expectation of what they're handling.
If we do a mask mandate in class, if somebody tests positive, you don't have to quarantine the class, right?
Uh, it depends. There is that huge gray area. It depends on the type of mask the kids are wearing. Both kids have to be wearing it a hundred percent of the time. That's the first question Teresa will ask. Are you positive that the kids were wearing it a hundred percent of the time?
Hundred percent, or they can't be together for more than fifteen minutes.
And they have to be wearing it properly. I had just had a talk with the first graders. This is what I was saying. I was like, I will give you house points if I catch you with your mask on the right way. Because it's important, because we wanna be here. I have literally just had that conversation with the first graders. So, and, and that's the thing with little kids, we do have to come back and revisit rules and expectations. And this little quarantine period definitely will allow the, you know, the first grade teachers are gonna get it back. They're gonna be super aware of what's going on here. But, and it's not on the teachers at all. I'll be walking down the hallway. And I'll see a kid and I'll be, where's your mask? And the teacher like, oh my gosh, I walked down the hallway with them and I didn't realize they weren't wearing it. Like, it's just natural for the teachers to go about their day. They're not mask control police either.
So how is it going overall? Is there, is that many incidents?
Masks, I mean, the kids, the kids are way more resilient than adults are when it comes to wearing masks. And I just always say, I want you here. I want you here, please follow us because I want you here. So, I mean. Everybody has their opinion on it and stuff, but like I said, we met in the middle between schools that aren't doing it at all and schools that are doing a hundred percent. And I think our kids are handling it really well. I mean, high school preschools.
This is a virus. We have to remember washing our hands goes a long way too. And not touching your face and not.
It, it just can govern rules.
It is.
Wash your hands, keep your distance, don't touch your face.
I was, I was in the preschool room the other morning and it was amazing. Those little bodies coming in, putting their mask in, going into the bathroom and putting things and washing their hands. That's how they started their day. Like, it's happening. So, I guess the change or the update that Mr. Severson was on like a half hour ago was, we took out the colors. So, basically what that is saying by taking out the colors is you guys are trusting Mr. Wilson, Mr. Severson and I to have a conversation with Teresa Will. We've been connecting with Valley City. And, you know, the doctors. We talked about putting a number on the number of cases before we have to shift, but even putting a number, it all depends on. Like, there might be a situation where we have this many kids out, but we have no staff to cover who is here. So, we talked about putting a number on for quite a while this morning. And we couldn't come to anything. So, we said, well, uh, you know, I think it's just gonna come down to us having a conversation about what it looks like here with staffing and students and then us contacting you guys. And saying, this is what's happening.
But do we, can't they make that choice?
Well, that's what we're asking.
That's what they're asking.
That's what we're asking.
I feel that they should be, if they feel the need to do the mask mandate, that they can put it in place tomorrow. I don't.
Not only that, but we're looking at.
When they're like.
To go to a remote.
Yeah, to the remote setting is more what we're looking for than the mask.
Like, right now, now with the eighth graders, we have twenty-seven percent of our students in quarantine. You know, when does that number become counterproductive, like you were stating, on, okay, half my class. Half my students are gone, half of them are here, or we get a couple of teachers that aren't here. Is it better to have everybody doing the remote learning, so it's the teacher and the student? Cause the teachers would come here.
Yep.
And teach in their classrooms and do it. And the ones that have done that so far have said, that was way easier, a lot, a lot better. That's the way that it should be.
And, and evaluating cases. So, we evaluate cases. Well, this came from household contact, but if we start evaluating and we're like, well, we don't know where this came from. Then we make the executive decision, okay, let's go remote for two weeks. Let's plan to go remote for two weeks, we clean, we teach them in school. You know, because we're, we, we can't prove where those cases are coming from that case.
Because that number can get higher the closer we get to when kids start getting sick and we have to start sending them home as well as a result of having those symptoms. So, that will increase our numbers. You know, like today, what if we have told fifty, fifty-three kids schoolwide gone?
Fifty-three.
Illness is a quarter, and then, and then we sent, uh, we sent twenty-some home after that or eighteen.
Oh, no, that's just COVID related. There were more out for illness.
But the question would be then, if, if that, if that happens and we wanna go remote learning, do we need to call a special board meeting? To get everybody here to, to, to vote on that? That's kind of what we're getting at. Are you giving us the, are you giving us the executive ability to say? We're gonna go to remote learning for the next two weeks?
I believe once we've approved the plan, that's what we said then. Your guys' decision.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, the flexibility was with them, yes.
But, I do believe that the board should be notified.
What's going on?
That a class is on quarantine. Because when I come home and my husband gets a call from a community member that doesn't have a kid in the district. And new information and then I'm like, oh really? So that, and I don't.
Can I share something with you Michelle? And I know you'll completely understand. Today Wilson comes to me and he said, oh, by the way, if you didn't know, we're gonna have to quarantine. Cause my daughter is that. I literally walked from where we talked into my office and messaged her dance book. She won't be there on these days. She was, I know, April is quarantine. Work, we have to wait for the numbers from Teresa Will before we can say anything and it's around the community before we even know what things are coming back.
And.
I do get some of that that have connections for outside activities and stuff. That I get. But, this person that.
Well, but you should've got a letter saying that somebody was positive in the building.
We did.
We did.
Yeah, a big generic.
You should've got a letter, yeah.
Got a letter. All that tells me is that there's a positive case.
But if you send people out of the building, they, we as a board should know.
We should know.
And, and.
We can't, but we, we're not, we're not supposed to divulge, we could, we could.
Twenty-some kids that.
We could tell you twenty-two kids were, were quarantined today. We can't, we're not supposed to be discussing classes or cases or anything like that. So we, we shouldn't be.
No, we just numbers.
And that was involved and I changed it as soon as you guys asked me about it.
Yeah, exactly. And so we shouldn't be telling which class it was.
I didn't think it was my place to come to a board meeting as I was trying to figure it out.
Right.
Like, to me, I'm like, they've already been around each other, let them finish out the day or let them do this. But. Here, I'm calling people from nine to ten at night because that's what Teresa Will is telling me to do. And I come to a board meeting and. I don't know legally what I can say. Mr. Severson clarified that to me. And. I, I just like, I didn't know that it was my place. So I hope I fix that for the second time. And I hope moving forward that we have.
Okay, so today you sent the kids home.
I did not.
No, right?
We did, yes.
We were not informed of that.
That we should know. If you are sending kids home.
Why do you need to tell them?
Cause.
I don't.
I don't understand why we need to know that.
And that's your work with you.
Yeah.
Cause I've told people when they come and tell me, I said, well, we've hired people to do that. I don't know why.
Call the school and ask.
And, and people do ask us, and you know what we say? I cannot talk to you about that. I'm sorry. I'm sure you'll find out about it before I do.
Cause I don't wanna say the wrong thing.
No.
As a board member.
I don't wanna.
The kids, the parents and shuttling them out of there. And honestly, you know, talking to you guys, letting you know that. Wasn't a thought process, cause we talked to Teresa, cause at first, we were going to send them home on the buses. But then I had two other kids that are in that grade coming in going, and showing symptoms and being sick and go, we're not sending these kids home on the bus to potentially infect others. So, brought them into the gym, contacted parents, made them get their stuff, talked to them about the expectations when they're home. On starting school on Thursday and being expected to attend in each of their classrooms and then making sure they get out to their rides.
So did those students all go home with their parents today?
Except my child.
A couple of whom went with Deb. She talked to the parents and she gave them a ride to Valley City.
Do, are the parents aware of this? Like, that's a real possibility that tomorrow you may have to be at school to pick up your child if that class gets quarantined?
I mean, I would assume, we have it in our plan.
No.
That it's a po, and I, I was super impressed with our parents in my two situations. I called, you know, one grade from nine to ten at night. Every single parent answered that, the phone ring. And I called on a Sunday to the other class and I didn't get hold of one parent out of twenty-two. So like, there, I use my personal cell phone number and they're having conversations with me, like, oh, thank you for calling. I was expecting this at some point, like. I hope that they're aware of it because what else are we going to do when we find out the information?
It's no different than if you have your kid go to school and they end up getting the food last year, you called the parent up, come get your kids, puking in school. Same difference, so.
And Eric and I were on that board meeting last Thursday. And what kept resonating in the conversation, and you can go watch it, it's recorded. Is they said transparency and being open and communicating and the board should be aware and. That's why I say it's nice to know.
They were going to talk, but that's what they kept preaching to us, that we should be aware.
We should just be aware. And I don't.
It's super funny because I feel like, sorry Michelle for cutting you off, if I'm gonna say it, I forget. Because on our conversations with them, administrators are saying, we would like to know before Governor Burgum goes on and announces something so that we can prepare. And they have yet to do that with us. So like, if you can imagine that the, the little fires that we're putting out due to COVID, like, I would love to be able to call you and let you know, but. Sometimes it's an afterthought and tells that you can settle down and we're at home with our family. And then I'm like, oh, I should call.
So here, the, the question would be then, so you get, you get the letter that says there's a positive case in the school. Do you wanna follow up email if there's, if there's, we quarantine a class, you wanna know how many kids got quarantined? As a board, do you wanna know that? I mean, do, if, if that's what you want, I can send that. But we've always been told, we, we don't divulge a lot of information because it's, because of. FERPA, HIPAA, all that stuff. We're not supposed to divulge a lot of information. We wouldn't give names, we're not supposed to give grades, anything of that nature. Do you wanna know how many kids? Is that all you wanna know? When, when?
Could it be one Deb or Joanne or someone just sending an email saying, we're quarantining class? So we didn't know.
But then somebody's gonna ask, okay.
To the, to, just the board members?
I don't, I don't know, none of that.
But, but, but the idea is, the idea, it, it's, it's just a simple transparency. I heard they quarantined a class. Yeah, they did. What do you know? I don't know.
I'm not at liberty to discuss.
I'm not at liberty to discuss.
Is there a place online to just put that where everybody can go check? The board members and the parents and whatever, just here's where we're at?
Like your numbers you're sending out?
Yeah, but even updating the numbers, I am enjoying.
Not necessarily the numbers, but hey, we had a quarantine, we had something.
Did you send that out on listserv?
I sent it to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you don't send it out on the listserv that there's a quarantine?
Just, just the, the letter that Mr. Severson sent.
That, that there's a positive case and if.
That goes out to everyone?
Yeah.
The positive case goes to everybody. I send it to the, the staff, the parents, and I, and I said, and we've decided I send it to the school board. Cause some of you wouldn't, like, Mike doesn't have kids in school, so he would never get that if he wasn't on the listserv. So, we've, we've said we're gonna send it to everybody. So you guys get the same letter twice. It'll be for your kid.
Like, I got a letter saying that McKelley was a close contact, so to moni, monitor for symptoms. So the people who are close contacts get a letter from Mr. Severson, but I called all my parents. So, like, I just felt like that's something.
Well, they, they got, all the parents got notified there cause they had to come get their kids. So, so they got, they got ahold of every parent when they came and got, or made arrangements to get them.
Yeah, Deb called them, right.
Called them. Cause in that letter, it also states that if your child was deemed a close contact, you will be contacted. So us contacting the group of parents to tell them to come and get them and why they were having to come get them is that next piece of communication being taken and then told. How long that they would be out for when they can come back.
I think the letter we give is sufficient. It's not giving out privacy.
Yeah. And that, that's what they told us to send out. But if you guys want more, we're gonna have to know what you want and, I mean, that, that's a simple email, just that, if that's what you want.
But, but, but the difference is, you could have a kid that's not, it, it hasn't affected the whole, the whole class. So I can literally say a kid's in close contact or a kid has been, uh, tested positive, whatever, however you say it, I forget how you said it, but. Uh, that tells me one student. I don't know that the whole class to have the quarantine or if a staff member just, just got sick or, you know what I'm saying?
No.
It's just kinda nice to know if, is there one student out or is there twenty students out?
But during the court, and during the course of the investigation, that's gonna be found out. And it states that if your child was deemed a close contact, you will be contacted. So therefore, if you were contacted.
We're, we're talking about the, the board.
The board, just the board.
Just the board.
If that's information you want, we can, we can tell you how many kids are quarantined, but that's, that's the only information we have. They told us that if, if, if I send this letter out, it says that there's a positive case in your school, in your school district. On the bottom, it says, for more information, contact the Department of Health. So if a parent's got a question about that, that's who they're supposed to contact. You will only, you'll only get another letter and contact if you're close contact.
We're not even, like, we're not even allowed technically to go up to a teacher and tell them that they're own students if they're individually quarantined. Like. Uh, we had to sign legal documents saying, like, this is what you can share, this is when you can share. So, I mean, I don't know about the guys, but I second guess everything. Like, oh, is this the right color? Is this what I should be sharing? Um, I don't know. I guess we can ask other administrators what's, how, how they effectively communicate it to the board. Because you guys are the one who make these decisions and we get that.
That's, I think that's what some of them are asking. If we don't have all the information on these, some of it we don't need necessarily, but. Like your little chart you sent out today with, uh, just the basic close contacts, close contact pending.
Yeah. And, and I get that, but.
Something like that would be.
I just want you guys to be open, like, to grace. Because by the time we process it, talk to who's involved, teachers, students, parents, whoever. Um, you guys are finding out before we even get through that process. Like I said, I literally walked from the cafeteria into my office. And the community knew about it. So in that time, community members can be approaching you and I don't want you guys to come back to us and, you know. Say, well, we want transparency, we want transparency. Like, we will get you that information, but you might hear about it from somebody else before.
We don't hear about it, you jumped.
We just wouldn't know.
I failed, I failed on the first one because it was our first class. And I, I literally sat here, I had a lot to share on my report and I didn't know exactly how to even go about it. I think.
Yeah.
I think you get the information to us when you can.
Yeah.
Don't put it ahead of any other stuff you gotta do.
So what information do you want? So if we, like today, would, would, would you want an email saying, um, we quarantined twenty-two kids?
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter to me at all, but if we're gonna do it, just, yeah, just tell us the number of kids.
I mean, I, it, it just, it just, the thing is, when you get blindsided by someone and you're supposed to be in charge or, you know, on the school board. And they sit there and say, well, I heard that such a class got quarantined or whatever, you're like, okay. You know, you, you feel like, and, and you're gonna have that, it's a small town, everybody's gonna know that stuff. But when you don't know it's.
But I'm okay with that.
I've been there more than.
All right. And then that answer is, you know, we don't, we don't, we're not privy to that knowledge. That goes back to, you know, call the school.
No, I'm saying, when does.
I, I understand it, but I mean, that's what, that's what, that would be a, a standard answer would be, you know, we're, we're not privy to who it is or how many it is. We're, 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 we get the same. We're we're we get the same.
Just a simple fact that that we had to quarantine a class.
And and that which is fine. If you want that information, I'll, I mean, if you want numbers, I can send it to you. I mean, that's that's simple enough. I could have just popped an email. School board, twenty-two kids were quarantined. We have one positive, twenty-two kids quarantined.
And then, you know, just be, you know, because when when, you know, luck position, when people are expecting you to to be aware of things. And you don't. I mean, it it makes makes you look like a fool. It makes like you're not doing your job. Well, you're fine with it, Rob, because that's what you are. I mean, that's that's just, you know.
I know, but I've been I've been asked thirty times, which class got quarantined?
Well, and 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 the simple fact is, we're we're not at liberty to discuss that, but to know.
And we don't need to know. Know that there was.
There was a class that's quarantined is all you need to know.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't even tell you. I would just say twenty-two were quarantined and one was positive.
And that's all.
No, I didn't say, I just a class.
But they're gonna ask what class.
No, I wouldn't even say a class. It would just say twenty-two kids were quarantined and one positive.
I think all you need is there was a quarantine that this made it.
They did that. They sent the letter out today.
They did say twenty-two kids, but they said they have a positive.
They said they had a positive case. Is it one, two, three?
And then, well, I sent the numbers.
There isn't, there wasn't.
One of those weren't even a positive case, yeah, because it's team.
Well, some of that comes down to though, suddenly we're at a few kids and suddenly we're at forty or fifty or sixty kids.
But you sent a letter out and said we.
We're gonna have to make a decision.
Send twenty-two kids home, right in my mind, twenty-two kids in our school got COVID today? That's right. You know what I mean? You sent the letter out and said we had a positive case. Oh, there's a positive case in school, not twenty-two positive cases.
Wouldn't that said you sent one kid home?
Yeah, I I thought one kid went home.
I with that case, one kid went home.
No, I thought there was a positive case in our school.
A positive case. One one kid went home.
Yeah. I don't know if he went home or not. That's what these guys are sending.
Because if they're a positive case, they're gonna be close contact with the classmates. So it's obvious that they're gonna quarantine.
No, it's not obvious because that's what we're saying.
Yeah, it is a.
No.
No, it's not obvious.
But we still have to do the investigation process. That's the thing is we, it takes time. We have to get ahold of Teresa Will first to verify. We have.
But I think Rob said it best, when convenient, we're not saying.
Yeah, that's.
So you're gonna you're gonna get jumped, okay? As as Chad used the term jump, you're gonna get jumped.
You you might or we.
Brett, you're gonna get jumped before you get that information then.
Once you've done your investigation, today you did your investigation.
Yep.
It was done, you decided to send them home. That's when you could shoot it out.
And.
Cause you were done with the investigation.
I agree, but even if you look at the first time, I'm very open with Michelle. I called her, we talked and she said, this is what happened and I'm like, I'm sorry, but I didn't. Even talk to Teresa Will yet, so I couldn't verify it. Like at that point, we're we're like, please stay home for proper measures because we are ahead of the Department of Health.
That's what you're saying. Your guys are doing the investigation. You didn't wait for Teresa to have to do it. You guys were done with the investigation and made the decision, correct?
We are. Like.
In coordination.
Like, yeah.
They're not doing that. Right.
We have to do that.
Right.
Since it was in class, we were able to figure out what the group is because of the way that we're aligned, it was very easy to just see that.
Yep.
That class.
So that, I mean, was done towards the end of the day.
Yep.
You know, and this is his first experience with it. I failed my first experience.
You didn't fail.
Like we don't know unless unless we do it, you know, and like this is what now I just, the second time I got to the house.
What I'm getting out of what's happening right now is I feel like when someone asks a question, you feel like we're questioning how you did it? That's how we learn. Like we have to be able to ask a question without anyone taking it like we're, cause I don't think you failed.
Well, I said I'll be careful.
But I don't feel like you did. I don't think that was it.
Yeah, we just we just needed to know what information you want.
So I don't want you. Eric, you just gotta speak up.
I have a suggestion for if there is a class that you said you had to contact all the parents personally.
I do personally just because I wanna reach out and kind of say, we don't know the dates yet, but.
So if I'm getting a call Sunday night from a random number or if I'm getting a call from the number I have saved as a school, I'm answering the school's number. But the random number, there's maybe a fifty-fifty chance that I answer that.
Absolutely, and so.
So do you have access to the school number to call out to everybody or do you have a number you can give to the parents that this is the number you will get a call from if there's an issue?
Well, I can tell you forty parents have my personal cell phone number now. But like, like I said, I shouted and none of them have abused it, said I'm semi-trust. But I I personally commend every single parent of the two classes that we quarantine because I don't answer a random number here.
Yeah, and I think you got lucky though. You you should be calling from a school number or a number of the parents.
Do you want to drive a hot car here too?
The problem, the problem was she, when Mrs. Bussie called me on Sunday night at like nine o'clock.
Yeah.
One of us or somebody would have had to come out here and, you know, so we didn't and it was just easier for her. And I think that. Did you have a teacher help you at that point too?
Well, one teacher for the first time, but I think we have a really good process in place because I leave a message. Hey, if you get this, feel free to give me a call back. I'll be happy to talk to you about it. And I write down who I contacted. I write an email to Deb and I mark it urgent. Please call these parents in the morning as soon as you get to work at six-thirty. And so she can call from the school. So that has worked really well. We haven't had any issues with that.
What would hap- what would happen if like one of those kids showed up at the school?
We would just send them home. I mean, it's not the positive case, so they're wearing a mask when they come in. We would put them in door three, the room.
Yep.
Entryway and then go home.
Yep.
Like we don't want kids to feel scared. It's happened before. We've had a family who misunderstood the quarantine process. They were waiting a test and they sent the other kids, you know, they sent the other kids to school. So they said, oh, I think we have a misunderstanding. We called the parents, they came and got them, so.
Another random, so you have a kid that's symptomatic or whatever, thinks they have colds or whatever?
Yes.
Tell them not to be here. You know they've had that. Are they required to take some type of test or anything to come back in the building? Be it kids or staff?
We say a test or symptom-free for twenty-four hours.
Yeah, that's what we talked, wasn't it, speaking?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, because that is what we have been told by this in a.
Twenty-four hours.
They recommend you test, but you can't force anybody to test.
And so if they're symptom-free, according to them, they're not shedding the virus anymore, so they should be safe returning. I feel like in there. Can I add that to my resume? Yes.
That and that's, I mean, it's stupid when you think about that because you quarantine a class for how many days and they're all symptom-free. But the person that was sick and they're symptom-free for twenty-four hours, you can't have that at school.
I mean, if it was working, I'd still like the number.
But but the the flu mimics so much of this with the same symptoms.
Right.
The only difference is lost the taste and smell really. And if if sometimes sometimes people with stuffed nose can't smell anything anyway, so. If you're symptom-free for twenty-four hours, then it wasn't the COVID. It was more of a flu or a head cold or something.
I always told me, I told my staff at the beginning of the year, I said, you have to think about where you've been. I just traveled to Florida. I started experiencing symptoms. I might wanna consider leaning towards COVID. But if I was just here going home at the at the end of the night, coming here, going home, then I'd be like, oh, maybe that's just a cold or.
Plus, we tell our students up there that travel from all over the US.
Don't come to North Dakota.
You're you're gonna get, you're gonna get, you're gonna get sick. You're gonna get a head cold, you're, you know. But if you're not showing a high fever or you're not, you're not losing taste or smell, handle it on your own. Take your night pill, take your day pill, whatever it takes, because you probably got a head cold more than you.
I mean, our data is not very much in our favor, you guys, honestly. The kids that have tested positive have. Their parents followed the guidelines and sent them to school because they weren't immune requirements, so. Or they're there.
What do you want us to vote? A mask or options or what? What exactly? You have the two chains.
So the mask.
So where do you want the mask thing put into this?
Oh, we have one one other change too before you, that's that, uh, we talked about the people coming in the building.
Oh, yes.
Cause at this point, Deb has been, they they come to the door and she will meet them. So like you come to sign out your kid, she calls and says, wait outside, we'll send the kid out. They sign out and just leave. What do we want to do with that? I mean, I I I don't foresee us allowing them out in here again at this point. But the office has become a question.
How does the office personnel feel about that? Cause we're we're here to protect staff as well.
Lindsay, you talk to Deb more than.
Oh, yeah, I don't think Deb wants visitors to come in the building.
I mean, we've got to look out for our staff at all.
Don't worry about it. You guys are the ones that are here.
I mean, doesn't the doesn't the office, doesn't have a buzzer? So I mean, you stand by the door and Deb knows most of the parents anyways. So you either call them, cause I can't get a signal on the parking lot by the by the school, so Deb will just usually usually see me because she'll know I'm coming. But if if she doesn't see me or I don't see movement in five, ten minutes, I walk to the door, knock on it and she waves to me and says, okay, I got you and calls calls.
And like I know she's been going to the door, opening the door, saying, I'll send them out and the parent goes back to their vehicle or whatever. And the kids come and if they're not old enough or can sign themselves out, she signs them out.
Mm-hmm.
And they just go or else they sign themselves out or they sign a sibling out or whatever and they go that way.
But the comments she's received are, why should, why are we not allowed in here if masks, if we're masked? And because they've said if you if two people are masked and you're close contacts, you you don't have to quarantine if you're that person's sick. That's.
My question to her was you're closer to them when you open the door than if they heard a walk in, so I don't understand the logic either.
And she, so we've got, we do have a sign, but we wanted to make sure that that's the consensus you want that says, you know, based on our plan, um, no one is allowed in the office. No one unauthorized.
And was that part just highlighted or would I have to retype that in the plan?
That's what do you want? That's.
I I think you had it highlighted.
Did I just have it highlighted? It's simple enough for you guys to decide?
So the visitors aspect, is that just parents? Are those the only type of visitors that we're talking about?
Well, you know, I mean, I, all of our, uh, she has, does does the male, does he come in?
The male person she meets at the door and they never have a mask on. Um, FedEx and UPS, I think it depends on the driver if they have masks on. And sometimes when they have big boxes, they come in, they drop them and they turn around and leave.
No, cause I'm just curious, like the guy that was here today doing the, um.
Filters.
Filters, yep.
That's a visitor.
And he had a mask on the whole time.
Yeah, but if we're not allowing visitors, then we don't allow that.
Well, he would be a worker though. He would he would actually be considered a worker.
You don't allow visitors in either.
So I'm just trying to get clarification on, is this really just a delivery thing and a parent to the office?
Well, and and here's here's the question, are the, so are they wanting to hang out in the office until their kid comes down there? Is that what they're waiting for? Is that what they're upset about? Are they wanting, is that because they're not gonna be able to walk down to their classroom?
I think it was the inconsistency of the enforcement on what parents. Honestly.
And I will second that because I come in a couple of times and sign kids out.
So it was, some parents were allowed in and some parents weren't, and I think it's gotten more consistent since it blew off. But that's really what it came down to.
Understandable.
So Rob's a parent. Is he allowed in? Because he's a board member, so technically he works here too. They can make that decision.
And Michelle is allowed because she she comes in because she's got a student, so she's okay to come in masked and whatever. But then if she comes in just to sign them out, is that is that the same thing?
Lots of drivers come into the office at the end of the day, but I think we figured that out too, but.
Yeah, they did. They can come in.
When parents see other people gathering in the office and then they're told you can't come in, that's where it's an issue.
I I didn't, you know. You look at what Deb's comfortable with, but if I walk in to say, I'm picking up Caitlin, sign her out and I go wait out in the car so Deb knows I'm out in the car just when the kid comes down.
Yeah.
As long as they're not hanging out there waiting or if they're waiting for a little like like Michelle's littles, maybe just in the vestibule area. So they're not in the office itself, but they're, they can come in, sign out, tell Deb that I'm gonna pick up my kids. And I'll wait out here at the vestibule because they're small and they don't want, you know.
Ultimately, it's up to you guys, so.
I just, I just don't, I understand where.
Would she be more comfortable if we hung the Plexi glass thing?
He doesn't want Plexi glass out there.
Plexi glass, last time I heard.
I I I just, I just think it'd be, there's no business hanging out in the office is is more or less anything else.
Like another thing is, we had Tom Gibson come in and present to two classrooms. He wore a mask, they were sixty-eight, they messed up. So he would be considered a visitor also. I mean, he literally sent him to the office and then walked. And we're gonna be through this grant, we're having an outside person come in to do counseling services. We're gonna have people come into our building. Are we going to allow them if they follow our protocols? Okay, so I mean, they can say, you can come into the building for specific reasons, right? Not just come, but you're wearing a mask, you're following our protocols. And you don't need to enter the office. Like, we're having practice from students come in. Another, another thing. And I and I tell them that, please just follow our protocols. You need to mask in the common areas. Visit with your classroom teacher about expectations in the classroom.
I don't think it's too much, too unreasonable if they come in, sign out their kids and like they're saying, then they're asked to go wait out in that vestibule. It's heated. It's not cold out there and wait for their child.
Yeah, you got a bench out there.
Yep, it's all out there, so come in, sign out, do whatever, then you moved into that area.
Would be put a little table by the door?
Uh, fifteen seconds worth of.
Sign out, put them on the desk.
Have that sign out thing a little way from the desk and like you said.
The sign out right around the corner?
Yeah. I mean, just, I understand where they're comfortable, but it feels like you're you're not allowing me inside, but.
No, and then you see someone come walking down the hall and you're like, well, why are they in? I'm not. They don't know that I'm here because of my, my session, so I mean, like.
I think the main part is not hanging out in the office. If they could sign them out, sit in the vestibule, I think.
Yeah, if they're current students or.
Opposed to that, I think.
Can I say, please contact the administrator if you have questions about visiting. If you are signing out your child, sign them out, wait in the entryway of the school.
Yes.
Yes.
But if it's other types of visitors, they can contact one of us, right, okay?
But I don't think the the board members should have any special privileges unless they're here for a meeting. I mean, look, if I come here tomorrow, I should work Thursday, I shouldn't be able to just come in the office and sit there and talk to everybody. Cause that looks bad if you do that.
No board member during the day.
Yeah, well, and we're all here, so I thought maybe we could all figure that out together, but. God, we don't have to put it in the letter.
Okay, so then what, now what, we the color thing we need that we're all okay with? Do we need, we don't put all this into one motion or what do you guys want to see for this plan?
Well, the color thing, we're just basically gonna adjust that so they can adjust it. There'll be no mandatory.
Right. We're gonna rid the colors. Correct, yeah.
Right.
We're not gonna mandate any ex- excessive changes.
Right.
I'll make the motion to change the color thing so there's no excessive changes.
So they do want to do a whole grouping or do you want to do individual parts or what do you guys want to see their administration like?
Do you have to vote on masks all the time?
That's what I'm saying. What are we gonna do, the whole process or what?
I'd go one at a time.
I would, I would do that one and then we move on to the decision of, you know, if we remote, go to remote, that we're making that decision.
So which one do you want to, which one do we want to look, address first?
Masks.
Okay, so we're addressing, do we want to, we have a mask mandate? Do we make a motion, one where the other?
And then with the with the mask, the other thought is as well as if we don't do that. Decide to mandate masks the whole day, do we make a change though that like the gaiters, that it has to be a face mask?
I thought that was a state.
It's a recommendation.
It's just recommendations.
And it's also if you're wearing a gator, if if we're contact, you can wear it, but if if you're, you'd still be considered a close contact.
So when I protect you, like if you're out about wearing a gator, you would still have to quarantine if you're by somebody who was positive. So the.
Teacher's responsible to keep track of that?
That's that's another thing is, you know, what do you guys want to put on?
I I know other schools just, it's gotta be a a face mask. It cannot be a gator because.
But then they can't have a vent.
Right.
And I sent you guys the picture and I said, you know, do we make parents? Cause that was on the comments, you know, I already got all this. I have to go out by. We we do have nice white ones, beautiful white ones here. We can. Because that was on the comments, you know, I already got all this, I have to go out by, we, we do have nice white ones, beautiful white ones here, we can get out, but. That's, yeah, that's up to you guys too.
Well, because the, the whole idea of the mask is, I protect you, you protect me, it's not, you know.
But every mask has a different, I mean, even the masks that say Bison, it's kind of the same material as a gaiter.
If the gait, if the gaiter isn't. Well, depends on the gaiter, though, there's a lot of gaiters that are thicker and a lot of them are thinner.
I know, but even like the Bison mask, they're like a gaiter, so then do we not say you can't use a Bison? I say, give everything as is with masks, that's, that would be my recommendation.
If, did you say, if we go to a full mask mandate?
Well, either way, if we do or if we don't.
If we don't, I, I think we can keep it the same, because we don't have to be so strict about knowing who's positive, who's not, because they're wearing it, they're protecting. You know, but.
Because that's just one of the biggest conversations is, is that, on the effectiveness and that it's.
No, no, no.
If you guys vote for us to not quarantine full groups or classes at a time, and that we have to do stricter contact tracing, then I would make sure that we have a plan in place to make sure everybody's wearing a compliant mask. Does, does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense.
That makes sense.
So. So, we're still looking for a motion, are we looking to fully mask?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we do not fully mask at this time and leave the mask requirements as they are.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on masks?
Can we get an explanation of what it is right now, that it's not changing from?
Right now, common areas, mask have to be worn.
Hallways.
Hallways, uh, common area.
Essentially, only in class when they're sitting down, for high school, when they're sitting down at their desks and at lunch. Those are the only two areas where they're not having to mask out.
But when they get up from the lunch table, they have to wear the mask.
If they're closer in the classroom, it, what is it?
Small groups.
Small groups, they got a mask.
Small groups, um, they, they should be, um.
What is it, ma, uh?
Well, that's changed, because it used to be for up to fifteen minutes cumulative.
Yeah.
Non cumulative, now it's fifteen minutes throughout a twenty-four hour period, right, which I totally called in March. When they were saying that, I think that doesn't make any sense, if you're going to get it, you're going to get it, right? So, that also changed since we put out our plan too. Like, most teachers were like, well, if it's cumulative fifteen minutes, you can sit and work with students for ten minutes and you wouldn't be considered a close contact, but now that's even different. And when I go in and do observations, I've seen teachers wearing them, and students wearing them for the most part, but I know it's not required in elementary, because we're all quarantining together.
I think that's where the question is, was, so it goes confined in the classroom, it's what the teachers?
We have one high school class where she requires them to wear the mask, even in class, the whole time. The rest of them, you know, as long as they're sitting at their desk, they can have their masks on, get up, they have to put it on. But with that being said, that's why if there's a positive case, we pretty much, like elementary, have to quarantine everybody, because we can't guarantee that at least six foot of spacing in all of our classes. And then kids sitting, well, I sat by this kid during this class, but then I sit by these other kids, then at lunchtime, we're not wearing it. So, it, it, that's just a good thing, because we're small, that we're able to do that, it'd be a nightmare if our kids were constantly switching to classes and, you know, other people.
In, in elementary, Eric, in preschool, in kindergarten, I mean, they basically put their masks in their cupboard, they do replaying all of that next to each other. And the kids sometimes wear them, but, um, first grade and up, aside from two classes, do the standard mask up.
And then if one kid gets it for both classes out of school?
Yes, and that, I mean, like we said, that wouldn't change even if there was a mask mandate, because then we have to change quiet music, recess, and what that looks like, because they would be around kids without a mask on there. Did I explain that okay? So, like, either we go all in and change our schedule to be in the classroom, or we keep it as is and we quarantine the whole world.
The motion is to keep as is right now?
Mike?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Chad?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, next part that you want to address is the colors.
The colors.
Right now, for, for recommendation, what they talked about is to get rid of the colors, they're gonna make the calls.
All make the motion in that direction.
I'll second.
Any other discussion there?
You say add, administration won't make the call?
Yes.
Yes, if they were remote learning.
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
In your comments, that's how I understand it, correct?
Yes.
So, do I give the administration the ability to switch to remote learning?
Correct.
Right.
Without a specialty?
Well, we would, we would communicate after why.
But it wouldn't be following some outside mandate, it, it wouldn't be at our discretion rather than.
But your remote learning might be your second grade, you can remote learn them, it's not eating the whole school.
No, no, this would be like, if we had a rise in cases and we don't know where they're coming from, we might wanna switch for remote learning, so it's getting.
As a whole.
For a couple weeks, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, if it's just a grade, it would be the same communication.
This is basically would be to shut the school, now have to go to remote learning.
Yes.
How prepared are the teachers to do that?
Good question, that was brought up by me last meeting, and they, I mean, we need some time to prepare. Kids would need to get things together and take things home, so it's not going to be like bam. It would be a conversation over days with you guys and us. So, I would hope that they would have time to prepare.
That's maybe where we can use some of them, count days.
I think I recommended three days, last time, was that what I recommend, or recommended, like, if we were to switch to a hundred percent remote, that we need three days to get materials ready of just the teachers, and then have the kids come back and be able to give them.
But it'd be, would it be, it'd be like a fourteen day? Or we don't know.
It would be, but, it would be, but it's not like Wilson and I are gonna call each other and say, hey, Sunday night, all these cases are coming, we're not coming tomorrow.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, but that's the plan, like, if some, those rises, you'd be like, discussing, be like, okay, let's do this.
Yeah, over a period of time, is that what you mean, Eric, or do you mean, like, how prepared are they to do that in general?
Yeah, just how quickly could it happen, and I don't think that, I mean, these same conversations are gonna go on all school year, there's gonna be two or three kids in the entire year that have it in school, it's not gonna go quick.
Oh, I absolutely agree, I asked for, like, three days. So, if we were serious about closing this school, I would think that we can give our teachers a date of plan, and then bring the kids back and be able to send, either we bring it back in groups or all together, and we are able to go over some of the major tech stuff, and if a class doesn't get ready yet, because if they have, they have all that in place already. The teachers have already been teaching it to their students, but I feel like it's a comfort of them knowing that they have time to prep them for the two weeks of remote learning, or more, two or more weeks, whatever needed, but.
And then at the seven twelve, like, I, we wouldn't need the three days, if we got the kids to be able to come for one day, because of how much of our stuff is already done remotely, online, through the school G, all of those assignments, so. You know, we might go to remote learning, and elementary might stay in the building, just as a result of.
Kids or whatever.
Yes, because of what it is, you know, we have kids going here and there between things, so. We might make the decision at seven twelve that we're going remote learning, you know, we're gonna make that decision Tuesday night, so we're coming back Wednesday, preparing the kids all day that day, because the teachers, a lot of them have been zooming with the students, zooming from home into the classroom already, even students that are just outside, contact teacher, can I zoom into class? And the teachers are gonna do that transition.
And I think that'd be okay, because we can start deep cleaning that side, right, as elementary's preparing to send them home.
Right, is there a comment? Do you have a motion?
Mike?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Chad?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
What else was on your list that you have?
Visitors in the building.
Visitors.
Yeah.
So, what I did was, visitors, contact administration for guidance on following protocols. Parents will check out students that are late, and then you can wait where their vehicle.
Somebody like to make that type of motion, or any other motions?
I made the motion that we do what she said, how, how do I say that? Just what you did.
Just what you did.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Good job, Rob. Lindsay will make a nice one.
Lindsay.
Mike?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Chad?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
So, I will fix that in the plan, I think the only thing I need to change is the highlighted staff, and then we'll have Melissa already posted on our website, the updated plan, and share it up to the listener.
Before we go to the next step, is, now, next time we have, talking about leave, does that have to be in the plan, or can that be separate?
Leave is separate.
Okay, so then we're done with that, we go to COVID leave. How are we handling leave now, if you're, are we doing sick, unless they've got a close contact and a, or a positive? Or how are we handling leaves?
We confirm with the county health that it's documented in, unless we determine it. If there is a work from home, that's what they're doing, if not, they take a sick day.
How does that go from teachers to non-certified staff, because we've never addressed that, that avenue, the other staff, which we had one out now, at Parrot.
Yes, so, our plan was that have for zoom in with our small groups, and we are short document cameras and stuff to be able to do that, so that is on our list, uh, technology to promote the funding. We're getting document cameras and extra devices for teachers to be able to do that. So, she is not, we just got her sub, but teachers have been zooming from home.
But like a janitor can't zoom.
Yeah, because there's other people that can't work from home.
Yes, absolutely, I agree.
So, how do you document what's working from home, what you have to do to be considered working from home?
Yep, we, the certified staff, the teachers, so our first case now, we obviously learned that we needed to revisit this, but our certified staff, they're required to connect for reading and math and teach the lesson in a group. Um, one of my teachers was connected every single time I went into a classroom. So, it just, they're required to do that, to be considered working from home, um, and then the sub provides the other things and transition times, and that's what I just said. I guess we didn't really make a determination, but I was like, I want you to keep reading your math to prove that you can work from home, so that's what we're fine with.
I think it's just a, it's a gray area, we're, what we're doing with these COVID leaves, I think that's where it's just got, because we've always, we'll talk about that, and we've never really talked about it.
Yep, absolutely, we'll take all the guidance you can. Is that okay? Is what, is what we're doing okay?
Doesn't the state pay for leave if you're under five hundred employees?
Not for school.
Not for school.
Not for school? That's.
And only, does, if you have the COVID itself, don't they cover that? Is there a federal program that covers that?
It expires on December thirtieth.
December thirtieth, and that would be the merger, that's the main dollars, but you need to have.
Family first, bro.
Right.
But it doesn't work for the school?
No, that, that part works.
That part works.
But your, your warranty, if your close contact or your, your spouse's got COVID.
Okay, so it's just if you have COVID, okay?
I mean, up to this point, we have had teachers hold.
So, what happens, what's going on now if you're a close, if JR was a close contact, he didn't have COVID?
He worked from home and wouldn't have to take leave for it, that's what has been happening, as long as you're proving that you're working from home, you get compensated for it.
But like Rob said, a janitor, a employee, or.
Yeah, so it's non-certified staff that I, I mean, would be a little bit more great if you guys are okay with.
Hey, I feel we have COVID money, so a person that can't work from home, we should decide how many days we can give them.
That's where, that's where I think the.
Because we have money for that.
Can you use COVID money for that?
You can use COVID money to cover subs, being a boss.
But I don't know if it can cover the wages.
No.
For your employee that's out, I don't think so, because that's a budgeting item.
No.
No, but, yeah, well, yeah, that was part of our, our budget through DCN, which is what we've been doing. So, if, if the sub is able to be covered by COVID money, technically, we're not losing.
Right, so if, if JR is out sick and we get a sub for him, we pay JR's salary out of our budget, and our sub
And then sub.
Pay is coming out of COVID until December thirtieth.
Sure.
Brett's, his question is, we can't use it for.
The sick leave.
The sick for the kitchen, whatever, that's gonna come out of ours, we can't get reimbursement for that.
Well.
But we pay for the sub, which.
If you have a sub, that would get paid.
Any other year, we'd pay for the sub out of our budget.
We have sub cooks, right?
Yes.
And, uh, bus drivers.
We don't have sub, okay, cooks is a bad example, okay, janitors, we don't have sub janitors. We don't have sub transportation people, we don't have sub, Lindsay, you're in the office now.
Bus drivers, we would.
Bus drivers, we would.
So. But, Jack, can I?
Bum, we're gonna. Bum, we're gonna, we have.
Well, yeah, I, I know, but.
Then we, that would cover if we had to do that.
Somebody will.
Have to hire a transport, ferryman.
I would, if it was a.
Okay, so to add to a confusing, a little already, okay, what about a substitute teacher that's teaching for a sudden for us, and then has to get quarantined as a result of sudden?
They're lost, hey. I, I mean, I've been giving guidance to the subs to mask or be six feet away.
But if it happens, what, what?
They're not following their guidelines.
Yeah, if that sub comes and is masked the whole time, but they have to quarantine, and so.
No.
After leaving.
No.
Well, then just make them do it.
Then the subs should be masked so they can stay in.
And, and I said that, it, and sometimes it's hard to teach with a mask on, so if they're at the front of the room, six feet away from the kids, instructing, technically, they would be fine, so I ask them to follow those guidelines up.
Yeah, it was just asked of me today, and I was like, oh, I didn't think of that, so I just would bring it up.
How, how would you engage, how many?
I don't know, but that's.
I mean, how would you? How would you know where they got the COVID?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, they kind of went through the bar that night afternoon.
We have to be in them close contacts here, and if they're, if they're following our guidelines, they would never be considered a close contact.
So, I, I just have a question, just for my bookkeeping part of it. So, if someone is subbing in first grade, first grade's quarantined, they can go sub in second grade the next day?
They do, yeah, because they're masking or they're six feet away the whole time. I mean, that's, am I wrong here?
No.
Okay, I say it so much, it starts to get fuzzy, so. And we, we did have the subs come to training at the beginning of the year to talk about that for that specific reason, and I know the subs that have been coming in always clarify, so. It's, it's like Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. McMillan, they teach title, they were wondering about the same thing, because they see multiple grades, and they're like, well, as long as you're six feet away or you're masking, you won't be considered a close contact for a specific grade.
I'm gonna maybe throw Lindsay under the bus a little bit, the gray area is gonna be for her at Parrot.
Absolutely.
What do you need from this board to give you direction on leaves?
Um, for the hourly people, I guess I just wanna know if you're paying them or not paying them, if they are have COVID, are close contact, are out for COVID-related things that the school sends them out for. Um, for the substitutes, I would like clarification if. Um, for the substitutes, I would like clarification if they will get any compensation. If they are deemed to close contact or if they would come up with COVID. If they're in a classroom that there's positive cases and they have COVID. Two days later, what happens? And then I would like clarification if people are out. And we don't know if it's COVID. Are they being required to take leave or what are we doing there?
I think, all I want to want, if I think if they're out and haven't said what they're here for, it says it.
We've, yeah, we've, Mr. Seaberson, I have already experienced that. You know, like I, the state is telling you to contact your own close contacts. So we have to clarify through city county health. You know, like, we need to know if this person is considered a close contact in order for them to get paid or in order for them to do this. So we have already done that with staff already. I don't know, it gets tricky.
So it's tricky, but it's all falling on her, how they're getting these leaves entered.
So. I, I know one that's coming up, um, an employee is ill. And some people don't wanna get tested, right? So they know that. There's a high possibility that they could have contacted it. So they're staying home, but able to work from home. That's the issue. Do we allow that?
Who makes the decision that if they should be tested or could work from home?
We can't make anybody test. That's the thing.
No, but who would make it the call if it's a sick day or they can just.
Right.
Rather work from home.
So that's your crisis. Do we say you have to test or be deemed a close contact by written, whatever? Or you take your own sick leave. That's what you guys need to decide. And I know, I know for a fact that this person would say, I'll take sick leave before testing. So.
If you don't come with a doctor's excuse, but you have it, you don't have it?
Yeah.
I mean, in our, if you're tested with it, it's no different than bringing a doctor's note for anything else. Well, I was sick, but after three days, if you don't bring a note, were you really?
Well, what do you do as soon as you test? You can't come to work then.
Well, and that's just it. It's like, there's nothing they can do if you test. So that's what some people think, right? There's nothing they can do. So you sit home and rest and tell your symptoms free for twenty four hours.
But that should then be in my mind, that's, you made that choice, that's sick time, that's sick leave.
And that's what we need to know of whether or not.
That's what Lindsay, that's where we're bad, bottom line, we're red.
Well, if the, if, you know, they call up and say that they're sick, they can't come in. Had they come in, we would have sent them home.
Right.
Right.
You know, so them letting us know, uh, sick, not having to come in, then, you know, then I'm going to also go get tested, then.
There's, there's the key part.
But if they're not getting tested.
But if they're not gonna get tested and then they have to wait till the symptom is free. But the point that I'm making is had they showed up, we would have sent them home.
Right.
And the leave.
Do you want, here on this result here, do you want our employees to be honest and tell us or not? If we want our employees to be honest and tell us, we need to give them COVID days. If we don't give them nothing, they're gonna stay home for a few days and say, well, it's just a cold, I'm gonna come to school with COVID. But if you want your employees to be honest and stay more if they're sick and go get tested, you've gotta give them something to do that.
But here, here's the thing. If, if you're, if day one, I wake up tomorrow morning and I got a, I got a little, little fever and I got a scratchy throat. I'm not gonna run to the doctor tomorrow morning to get COVID tested. I'm gonna wait twenty four hours.
Benefit information from Department of Labor. The first box on there says that you are either quarantined by order. Or you're seeking a diagnosis in order to qualify.
Yeah.
Diagnoses, do they want them?
So seeking a diagnosis, you'd be going to the doctor.
Okay.
And whether you're.
Or.
Or at that.
Or a doctor saying that they don't have.
Correct.
Well, Martin, if you got a one million, it's a.
You already got a million.
Yeah, provided by healthcare to self quarantine.
Right.
Or caring for an individual who is subject to it.
But that would be like you say, the doctor's slip.
Wait, you're, you're saying we don't qualify for this as a school, right?
No, we qualify for it. We have to provide it, but we don't get reimbursed for it like a regular employer would.
So this is just saying they can take their paid leave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For COVID.
An employer is required to provide paid sick leave to a full-time, part-time employee who is unable to work. Due to these situations.
What's the CDC, because there, there's a thing that you have to have two or three of the sim, the COVID symptoms be actually considered COVID. I know a high fever is one of them or a, what, over a hundred one fever.
Two or more of the symptoms, which is every symptom you can think of, or a fever of a hundred point four, or loss of taste.
Right, so, so if I, well, you know, you have to have multiple symptoms, oh, or the high fever and lo, lost taste and smell.
Yeah, so typically people who have been losing their taste and smell, that's how they know. You said that earlier.
Right.
So an employee loses their taste, they choose to stay home. Like, I mean, the odds of it being COVID are pretty high.
Right, right. At that, at that point, I would hope that they would, you know, if I woke up tomorrow morning and I had a fever of a hundred one, scratchy throat. I'm probably not gonna go to get tested right away. If I wake up tomorrow morning, I can't smell anything, I can't taste anything, I'll probably go get a test.
And that person should test before they come here because it couldn't affect the rest of the people here. We wanted people in school.
But if you don't give them nothing, they're not going to do it. If you have a new employee that hardly has any sick leave. I just went through this for three months at another work. And we said, you need, if you don't want your employees coming to work sick and you want them to follow this pandemic, you need to give them something. So they're honest. And the company gave us, I'm not telling the school to do it, but the company gave us eighty hours of COVID sick leave to be used. If you have COVID, if you're wasting for your, waiting for your test results or the company's making you stay home because you have a symptom.
That's exactly what this is.
That's basically what this is doing, right?
Right, but I'm saying if we want our employees to do it, the school board is gonna have to say, we're gonna give every employee so many days.
That's what we're doing.
Basically what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
We're making them use their sick days that they have.
No, no.
If they're not getting tested.
If they're not getting tested.
If they're just sick. Like say I come down with a cold tomorrow and I say I'm not coming here and then I'm sick again for two more days.
And I got the cold.
Like at some point, I should probably get tested if I wanna come back to work. Or use my sick leave. Because this, this says.
We're doing what you're saying. We're looking to put in eighty hours for them. COVID.
I would just say that. Either you show proof or seek a test or you use your own sick leave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah. So why didn't we have a conversation with you?
That's not as clear, that's not as clear for close contacts because we've had a teacher out for more than two weeks. Being a close contact with three different people and things still happen from home over Zoom just as well as. Anybody else can teach in the classroom or stuff. You know what I mean? Like.
Right, cause the, the only thing, and you keep bringing it up is. You know, if they don't go and get tested, we wouldn't let them in the building any of this.
Hmm, that's not true.
Send, we would send them home if they're showing the symptoms that they are, they got a cold, because we're gonna do the same thing to students. But they may not necessarily go and get tested. So if we're sending them home, while I could come to work, I would be a little under the weather, but I could do my job. But we're not letting them come in because of what we have in place. We're sending them home. We're sending those students home.
Well, we're also eligible for employment insurance and that pays right away too if they're off.
And then they're not your employee and don't expect any work out of them and expect them to be looking for new work. I mean.
Well, in certain situations though, I mean. You know, cause I keep getting paid that way until I can return.
So if, if some, if a teacher is sick, it doesn't come to work. And gets tested for COVID, has to wait five days to find out. That sub, that teacher continues to get paid because it's budgeted out through the school. That sub payment from the school gets reimbursed from the state.
Till December thirtieth.
Till, till the end of the year, correct.
And if that teacher was negative from COVID, does that matter?
No.
No, not if they're waiting for it.
So is there a chance?
So if they, and it's covered if they don't wait.
That's, that's basically where it's at. If they're looking for it.
So my question is if they're deemed a close contact, then we still pay them if they're teaching over that two week period? If they're deemed a close contact verified, you know what I mean?
That's what this, that's what this says if you're following a federal, state or local quarantine or stay at home order.
Yeah, it says for two weeks.
Yep, you got it for two weeks.
And this person has been quarantined three times.
What's that?
This person has been quarantined three times.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying. But if they, then if they got, if they use their eighty hours, now do they have to take sick leave then?
Well, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, because I fill out the blue sheets for Lindsay. So I guess that's my clarification on, do we pay them if they're teaching from home if they're deemed a close contact?
Yeah, if, if they're, if they're still able to teach, they're still working. They're still doing their job.
So then that wouldn't be considered part of their eighty hours then?
We haven't been considering it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not for the contract people.
But if you say it was a, like you said, if it was a custodian that couldn't work from home, they have, they'll, they'll get paid, but they've only got eighty hours to use.
Right.
So if they get quarantined two, three different times, after that eighty hours, they have to take sick leave? Is that what you're saying?
I guess so or take it unpaid.
Okay.
And then that all ends, ends on December thirtieth. So after December thirtieth, no one will have eighty hours.
Is that going to be renewed?
I don't know.
We don't know.
Well, then the policy, our policy ought to change.
It would have to change if anybody wants. You would have, you guys would have to then put that into effect if you chose to do that after July.
Or October now is only gonna go to the end of the year.
Cause from now until December thirtieth or whenever that ends, if an hourly person is gone and you need a temp to do their work from them being gone. The temp's work is covered by the state.
Right.
So why cap theirs at eighty hours?
Right.
Why cap any of their eighty hours? It's gonna be reimbursed from the state. You budgeted for them to be at work anyway.